We can call this meeting to order, if you would please, Michelle.
Avon.
Here.
Caledonia.
Here.
Canisius.
Here.
Geneseo.
Here.
Groveland.
Here.
Lester.
Here.
Lima.
Here.
Livonia.
Here.
Mount Morris. North Dansville. Nunde.
Here.
Ashen.
Here.
Portage.
Here.
Sparta.
Here.
Springwater. West Sparta.
Here.
York.
Here.
I'd like to ask Florida Supervisor Martin Schuster to please read us some questions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the British States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have some meeting minutes from our last regular meeting, the 12th of January to good. Anybody have any suggested changes for those draft minutes? Here, now I'd look for a motion in a second, please.
Move, Schuster. Second question.
Do you have a motion in a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? They're here. We do have a public hearing this afternoon. I'd like to ask Shannon to please, uh, just run in that, please.
Pursuant to New York State law, Section 201, the salary of an appointed or elected county officer can only be increased during the term of either their office or the adoption of a local law. The state law for you is necessary in order to provide the state law and the federal specifically to the officers that work in law.
Thank you. With this hearing open, I'd ask if anybody cares to comment. You are certainly the only whining comments on the public hearing. Anybody, members of the public wishes to comment, they can come forward, sign a podium, and talk about the topic. Any supervisor caring to comment at this time? Public hearing will remain open till the close of the meeting. We have a communication, please, Michelle.
The next conversation with the county will be held on Tuesday, February 1st, 2022, at 7:00 PM at the Canisius Town Hall, 6210 South Livonia Road, Canisius.
Do you have any extra questions? Mr. Chairman, I do just have to grab the points and ask you now, son. Thank you, Mr. Naup. Is there any questions or discussion on these extra points?
Avon. Caledonia. Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris. North Dansville. Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater. West Sparta.
Aye.
York. I-1609, absent 400, adopted.
We do have, excuse me, privileges of the floor, uh, this afternoon. Mr. Chairman, I request further reading of the floor for Angel Alice to give us a broadband update. Thank you, Mr. Demme.
Thank you for privileges today to be able to come and provide an update on the broadband activities. First, I'd like to introduce the team. Jim Bossi, he is the Chief Operating Officer for Empire Access. We have Ryan Garrison, who is our Lead Project Engineer from Hunt Engineers. He is, his title is Director of Technology for Hunt Engineers. And of course, Megan Crowe from the Planning Department. We also have in the audience Bob Vanderlander, who's the Director of Marketing from Empire Access, and Brendan Wagner, who is with Project Management and Marketing, also with Empire Access. Other team members that aren't up here today, just to kind of preface today's update, we have a lot of folks that are involved with broadband activities in addition to ourselves, certainly the County Administrator, the County Attorney, Julie Berry, she's not here, with Grantson in public information, and of course, Bill Bacon with Economic Development. As you know, we've contracted with Hunt Engineers to come and provide quarterly updates to the board on the various broadband projects and activities that we have, and provide us with some guidance on how best to move forward with the Light Up Livingston Initiative. I'm going to turn the presentation over to Ryan to kind of kick things off a little bit, but just in terms of kind of the higher level points that we'd like to be able to cover today. We're going to really provide an overview on the phased approach that we've been using to date. We're going to give Empire Access an opportunity to provide update on the Reconnect Grant Round Two and where they are with that. Talk a little bit about the USDA Reconnect Round Three application, which we're currently working on, and that application is due February 22nd. Talk a little bit about the non-funded service areas. We call them NFSA, which you've been asking us about. That's affectionately been referred to as leveraging of assets. We're just going to kind of touch a little bit on that higher level. Talk a little bit about the tiered approach that we've been following to date, which has really been at the direction of the board here. Then talk about next steps and some of our future grant opportunities that we're working on and some Q and A. So with that, I'm going to kind of go over to Mike.
How's everyone doing? So basically, you know, I don't want to reiterate too much information. Last time we spoke with you, you know, through the whole process, we've been transparent about the surveying the residents, our approach to pursuing funding, and ultimately securing that funding and piecing together projects to reach the goal of 1 gigabyte service availability to all the residents of Livingston County, and actually looking beyond that a little bit. So. So back, the background is, you know, obviously Livingston has recognized the importance of broadband, and obviously see that as a key piece of economic development and their strategic plan moving forward. So they formed a broadband committee and commissioned a countywide asset inventory and engineering report and a public survey to analyze the need and shape of future strategies. So we wanted to look at infrastructure, types of infrastructure, speeds available, actual speeds available, so actually speed testing residents to see what speeds they're receiving as opposed to what they're being sold. And that essentially added up to this tiered system. So we wanted to address needs based on availability, speed, and the type of infrastructure, just like we described, and we wanted to organize them into categories of an approach. And really, the first tier is unserved residents, so residents that receive under the federal standard of broadband speed, which was 10 by, 10 megabytes by 1 megabyte, and now is, they've actually increased to 100 by 20. So they recognize that that standard was very low, and they've gone ahead and increased that. So we've made adjustments in the grants that we pursued along those lines. Tier one hit the unserved residents way out in the very rural areas, and that was really accomplished in Reconnect Round One, Round Two, which you guys were awarded funding for, and that project, we'll touch on that project in a minute. Next was Tier Two, so once they made that adjustment in the minimum broadband standard, we immediately looked at what we could apply for in the next round of Reconnect based on those new standards. So currently, we're putting together an application that's going to identify those areas, those addresses, and start to expand our project beyond what we've already been awarded. And that'll go in as a grant, just like it did last year. And then in between that, we've actually taken advantage of another federal grant, the NTIA grant. And then ultimately, you know, we're, you know, the county's in a very good position at that point, but Tier Three is to look at, okay, you've got served areas, and you've got various types of infrastructure within that served area. Let's look at that and let's see what's worth addressing. You know, is, are there issues with resident speeds in those locations? Let's look at those. If you guys find out that that might be worth it for you, we can invest in those areas. But that's really the last step is to, really the icing on top of the cake. Our phased approach, again, Phase One was really somewhat incidental, but the New York State Broadband Office awarded to Armstrong in the southern part of the county. Phase Two was our USDA Reconnect Grant last year. Phase Three was the NTIA grant that I just described, which is a smaller area but slightly different criteria, so we could expand our areas. And then Phase Four would be Reconnect Round Three, which we're currently targeting, areas that were removed from last year's application. There was some confusion with the FCC and the USDA on overlapping areas that they funded, and they defaulted to the FCC. This year, we feel confident that the types of technologies they invested in that area, satellite, we can apply for grants in those areas, because USDA does not recognize non-terrestrial broadband solutions when they look at the eligible areas. And then essentially Phase Five is to pursue economic development grants. So once you've kind of surpassed the standards that the FCC has currently set for broadband, 100 by 20 meg, you'd have to kind of look at funding that might not tie so directly to bandwidth that's being delivered, and more like economic development grants like ARC, I think it's on the USDA. And then at the end, we want to go back and, we know that the data that we've been provided is, we've refined it as best we could, but you know what? It's not, we're, there will be essentially some customers that we need to get to. So what we want to do at the very last step is to go back and do a survey, just like we did before, find these folks, and see what it's going to take to get out to them, and find a way to meet our goal of 1 gigabyte across the whole county. Phase One, so I won't dwell on these too much. You can see the statistics on the left. The maps are a little hard to see, but the green in the south is the Armstrong New York Broadband Office program. I believe that portion has been completed according to the New York State's website. This is the first grant that US, that Livingston County engaged in. This is Reconnect Round Two. Without getting too far into it, we had a section of it removed based on the FCC awarded funds, but that's essentially what we're going to go for in Round Three. This is a description of what was removed from our application. The red area was taken out based on the FCC action, and that's essentially going to go into our project area this next time around. So non-funded service area, you mentioned? Yeah, sure. So non-funded service areas, when you go for these grants, you define an area that's going to be funded by the grant, and then if you want to do anything outside of that funded area, you have to either define it in the grant or work it out with them post grant award, in terms of a buyout, they call it. So we're working through that in this Reconnect Round Three to find the best way to do it, include it in the application. Hopefully, we can find a good way to get that included, but essentially, that's going to increase any local share, as opposed to, you know, it's not funded. So they haven't defined it as an area eligible for funding. We're asking them for us to go use the same infrastructure to serve that, however, does not pay to do it. So we kind of have to show them what percentage of the cable will serve this non-funded service area, but if we can define it in the grant, it essentially could give us the green light when the project starts to go through the right way, instead of getting into a buyout process post.
The only thing I would add to that is that kind of parallel to that process, we have been advocating with our federal representatives and actually with USDA representatives to see if we can have this requirement loosen a little bit, removed in its locality, because it really, if you think about it from the overall perspective of how you want to expand your entire infrastructure, it really doesn't make sense to have that kind of limitation on it. So hopefully, we'll be able to make some headway with that.
And the third item, really quick, this is something that we do need to confirm, but we do believe is true. That non-funded service areas in Round Two may be, the buyout may be negated if we are awarded Round Three, but there's some questions about timing and some other things that we just really have to get some clarification on, because we've already committed that to a point.
Good afternoon, everyone. Oh, we're finally ready to get going. It's been almost two years, and it's been frustrating dealing with USDA. And what I found is, the more local the government is, the more easy it is to deal with them. And when you get to the federal level, it's almost impossible. But we've got all our approvals from the USDA now. We're in the process of finalizing our agreement with the county, and we've hired Hunt Engineering to do the engineering work on the project for us. So we're going to get ready and start this project in February. I'm hoping that it's less than three years. My expectation is it'll be two, two and a half years to build it. We're going to start with the backbone, and that's kind of starting down in Wayland, and then working our way up north to Livingston County, over to Dansville, and then north to Avon, and right around building two different rings in Livingston County, and then we'll fill in the, what we call the central office areas after that. With any luck and, you know, some help from the utility companies, we can have this project done in a couple of years, would be my goal. On the NFSA buyout, we're working with Yates County in buying out fiber to provide service to NFSA addresses in their band as well. And it's been a frustrating process, but we're using that to kind of learn more about what we've got to do for Livingston County. As Ryan mentioned, Reconnect Three would really obviate us from doing that, and we could utilize that fiber for addresses along the way if we win Reconnect Three. If we don't win Reconnect Three, then we've just got to go through a process with the USDA to figure out, you know, how we can do that and how expensive it would be. Bottom line is that the network's going to be built primarily with 96 pound fibers, and we'll probably use less than 10 fibers of 96 pound fiber, and the rest of the fibers just basically sitting there, waiting to be used for something else. Any questions?
So just, we're outlining, here, we're just outlining NTIA grant, so this is... This has not yet been awarded, but we, it's out there pending right now. So this is kind of an in-between grant where we found some additional addresses that we could serve based on their different criteria. So this is out there, we thought we would hear back by now about it, but we have not. And part of the Round Three application kind of teeters on whether or not this is awarded. You know, we would remove it if it's not awarded for NTIA, so that's the NTIA addresses. And then basically, this would be, if we're awarded NTIA, this would be everything that's been awarded to Livingston County to date. And I do show ARDOF there because it has been awarded by the FCC, although primarily satellite technology, like I said before. So here is the phase, our Phase Four, Reconnect Round Three. This is the potential funded service area, so anything that falls outside of this would be what we were just discussing, non-funded service area. It consists primarily of a lot of the ARDOF area that was removed, and then the scope, the scope also increased the minimum speed to, from 100 to 100 by 20. So all that combined essentially gave us this new area. And like I said, NTIA is included at this point, but as soon as we find out about that, we'll remove it or include it. And this grant is due February 22nd. So what's left? Now, let's suppose that we're awarded the next round of Reconnect as well. You've got all your, all the negative areas that you see here are served with 100 by 20 at least, you know, up to a gig. And then this gray area that you see is what's left, and it's a mix of, you know, in between 100 and some served areas, so you know, there's a spectrum in these areas, you know. So this is the Tier Three that we were talking about. I think we might have that, yeah, right here. So this is really that Tier Three area where it's served, and some of it is below 1 gig, and we're definitely going to address those pieces of it. But there also comes into question competition. You know, do you want to increase competition in some of these areas, specifically with a different type of infrastructure? One thing we kind of breezed over here is we're talking about fiber optics, all the way from the electronics to the home, so fiber to the home, and which pretty much sets you up unlimited. You can continuously increase bandwidth over that type of technology, become limited with copper technologies. So you're kind of in that point where you've got some choices to make of whether or not it's worth it for you to invest in that area. And then future grants, we kind of touched on this earlier. Now we're into the economic development type grants, where, you know, the federal and state funding, a lot of the times limits us to 10 by 100, and we're going to have to tap into some other economic development type grants to find that money.
There's just something I want to make sure we covered here on some of the next steps. So obviously, from when we first got started with this project, you know, the direction of the board has been really focused on those areas that have no service at all, to those that have, are underserved or just very inappropriate level of service. So that's how we kind of came up with the tiered approach that Ryan just described. What we think we need to do for this, for this next level of analysis, is really to do a town-level verification of the service tier for each of the communities. So we can provide you with a map that shows, you know, what we have submitted to date, and we can show you on that same map what hasn't been included up to this point. I can tell you that we, based off of the information that we've had to use from USDA or other sources, we did get calls from members of the public saying, hey, I don't have service, I need service. We look at the map, and the map would be like, well, this says you do have service. So we know that there needs to be some ground truthing of some of the level of service available, so what we'd like to do is kind of work with each of municipalities and kind of work through that a little bit, see what your thoughts are on the tiered service, give you some idea in terms of where those gaps are, and maybe help identify some of those additional funding sources that might make sense for you all, either individually or as a group. But this new tier, this Tier Three is kind of a, it's introducing the next level. We just haven't gotten that back. We've been taking care of all of what I could call the goal-hanging bridge up to this point. Now we're really at the point where we have to dive into the data to get it a little bit more defined, I think, for all of you.
Yeah, I would also add to the Tier Three piece of it, you know, you guys were a little bit ahead of this wave of broadband money that's about to come through the federal government and be assigned to the states. So, you know, there's, there will be additional funds, and you guys have already completed a lot of work, you know, with the money that's already been available for broadband. So, you know, I think to keep your mind open for Tier Three type projects, you know, there might be some additional funding available pretty soon. So future activities, so we're going to continue quarterly updates on the grant project, Reconnect Phase Round Two. So we'll just come back here and let you guys know exactly where we're at, so we won't go through all of this information, we'll just give you more nuts and bolts, construction update. We're going to engage in a public information campaign, which is basically going to communicate where the project's at and what we're doing with the public. And then we're, Empire's going to help us with that, and we're, it'll probably be like a dual campaign. Additional grant funding opportunities, so NTIA is going to come back around next year. If the, if we can find any additional areas that are eligible for funding, we'll try that. USDA is going to come around again next year. The FCC has some programs, and we'll see where the federal money gets put from the infrastructure bill. There's ARPA money out there available for broadband, and, you know, depending on exactly how you want to spend it, it kind of depends. There's some rules around broadband with that. And then Northern Border Regional Commission, they do block infrastructure grants. So there's some opportunities there, and those grants are nice because they don't necessarily have the strict requirements that some of the federal broadband programs do. And then again, we're going to survey Livingston County residents to see where we're at. You know, that's really where those gaps are, how are we going to make sure that we're complete? That's really the goal here, so that's step four, and then next, and then we're going to see where New York State goes with broadband. Like I said, the way we understand it, the federal money is going to be divvied out to the states, and then the states have to have a plan in place for how they're going to, you know, program this money. And so we're just kind of waiting to see where they do that. They do have a broadband office now, they've had large initiatives before, so they're kind of set up for it, so we'll just kind of let you guys know how that progresses as well, and that'll kind of feed our future phases here. That's it.
Yeah, certainly we can answer any questions. I did want to, though, take the opportunity to thank Ryan and the Empire, please. I think you all know that when we first got started with this project, we went through the RFP process and selected Empire Access as our partner. Had it not been for that innovative partnership, the support of our team and the support of Empire, we wouldn't be where we are today, and certainly with the support of the board, the administrator, and certainly all the direction.
Do you anticipate that, the next survey going out, to the residents? I mean, certainly Empire will be doing work in the commission around this, so we can be confident of that timeline.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
Exactly, yeah. You know, the key parts to record in that survey is what's left after the two projects that we have gone now, so, you know, we could be talking a couple of years down the road.
I know it's going to be a while.
Well, you know, it does raise the point of some kind of continuing data collection, that hasn't necessarily been discussed, you know. It's been, we kind of talked a little bit about it, but since that's all that we've done. So the state of New York is collecting information from the barriers right now, so we had to submit what we could provide by addressing the state of the law. They're putting together a database, and that database is going to be complete and made, and I know we're not making it up to a particular level, but you should request that information. But you'll have exactly what we can provide either us across all of New York State. I think there are, I think the state's got a lot of information, and I think we're confident that we'll take a hand out and draw that.
ECC Technologies, just hired by the state for that particular program, the one the state has underway right now. We had that in conversation with ECC, and we did request to be able to get out these information that they're willing to share. You all probably already see and know that they do have a survey that's out there right now. That information will be provided to us, but what we're really interested in is kind of their next step, which is going out and looking at the line and location of all of those addresses, and they're going to come back to us, and they're going to ask us what we think about those maps and what we think about where some of those gaps are. So we are, we will be included to some extent.
Are those people surveys or after?
Surveys are actually, their survey is actually going out right now.
Do you think that that process you just explained would have any effect on what the survey data would show you after? You're saying, here, now, if it's good, David, you can catch it? We would get incorporated. It sounds like a decent point of that, what you just mentioned, right?
Quick question. I hear that this is going to take two years. It's all the towns, but we have to allocate our money. It's a, it's a, we want to allocate our money for broadband and so forth. Do we need to allocate that money and say that because what if you weren't, you weren't ready or you weren't ready to have Canisius ready for broadband yet after two years? What happens there? Does that make sense what I'm trying to ask?
Yeah, it does. I think, I think so. For starters, you, your, I think you're probably talking about your ARPA money, your American Rescue. So you do have till 2024 to spend it.
Right.
Basically allocate it. You have another two years to technically have it fully expended. So you do have some time table on that. I think your town by town situations, if they're not covered in our tier one and two efforts, kind of get to that tier three of kind of what's left and what do we have at our disposal from grants, resources, town and county and public, private together? What do we have left at our disposal to go tackle all the remaining gaps? So I think you, you will see through reconnect two, reconnect three and NTIA, which we talked about, you'll see some areas I'm sure Canisius hit in some of those. But that whatever's left, at those address points that are left, I think then you're looking at, you know, what can you do as a town supervisor with your money to support the overall effort? So soon you'll be able to kind of see what that looks like.
And then we can allocate it and say, okay, that's, that's what we want to, we want to be sure to do.
Okay. That part of ARPA is not, ARPA money is not a tremendous amount of money.
No, it's not.
What kind of position does that put us in? Would like each municipality be eligible to apply for a specific grant if we needed to, to spend more money?
Possibly. I was talking, I was talking with Mike about this earlier in relation to the Lima example. I mean, potentially yes. I mean, I think, yeah, you're right. Your, your town by town allocations would be easily exhausted for a massive broadband project in your locality all day long. Yes. Even on just a match. Yes. So I think it's probably partnering with the county's endeavors and saying, hey, look, you know, how do we, this is really, tier three is really like your, your last of the last to get to, you know? And just to be clear, on these, on these ones that have services now, it's, you get in that dynamic of, you know, do we really want to go do the full endeavor, which is gig level speed to the home for every single address point? Because you're going to have lots of your residents be like, I'm kind of fine with the 100 or 200 I'm getting now. So realize that on a, from a, like a politics and a strategy standpoint is the more difficult of the collective choice you have here than tier one and two, which is like next to nothing and nothing, which are no brainer for the county to make, make the investments, which you guys supported unanimously.
Right.
Angela, could you send us those maps?
Yes, yes, absolutely. What, what we would like to do is to be able, right now it's kind of hard to tell based off of the scale that we have on that. But what we'd like to do is actually create maps for each of the towns that has the level of data so that you can kind of see. And then what we'd like to do is have a conversation with you about, you know, this is what we applied for, this is where we're at, this is where we're seeing service to no sort of, what are you hearing? Do we want, you know, what are you getting? And we will actually sit down and kind of be.
Any other questions or discussion? Thank you very much. We do have two resolutions on the agenda.
Adopting 2022 official list of county officials required to file an annual statement of financial disclosure under section 2F of local law number four of the year 1990. Resolution supporting the enactment of the New York State By American Salt Act.
Is there any discussion on either of these resolutions? During that I took a motion in the second. Move this.
Second, Schuster.
We have a motion in the second. All of the favor.
Aye.
Evan. Caleronia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Levonia. Mount Morris. North Danville. Nunde. Ashen. Portage. Sparta. Springwater. West Sparta. York. I 1609 absent 400 adopted.
We also have some resolutions that are going to require a separate rule.
Mr. Knapp. Amending the 2022 Livingston County Budget Office for the Aging.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Is there any questions or discussion on this resolution?
Evan. Caleronia. Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo. Groveland. Lester. Lima. Levonia. Mount Morris. North Danville. Nunde. Ashen. Portage. Sparta. Springwater. West Sparta. York. I 1609 absent 400 adopted. Authorizing transfer of funds, economic development.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Is there any questions or discussion on this resolution?
Evan. Caleronia. Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo. Groveland. Lester. Lima. Levonia. Mount Morris. North Danville. Nunde. Ashen. Portage. Sparta. Springwater. West Sparta. York. I 1609 absent 400 adopted. Authorizing and approving a settlement agreement to an action relating to the opioid crisis. Allergen.
Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Is there any questions or discussion on this settlement agreement?
Evan. Caleronia. Canisius. Geneseo. Groveland. Lester. Lima. Levonia. Mount Morris. North Danville. Nunde. Ashen. Portage. Sparta. Springwater. West Sparta. York. I 1609 absent 400 adopted. Authorizing the purchase of one 2021 Gradel XL 3100V for the Livingston County Highway Department, Alta Construction Equipment, New York LLC.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Is there any questions or discussion on this purchase? During that, please Michelle.
Evan. Caleronia. Canisius. Geneseo. Groveland. Lester. Lima. Levonia. Mount Morris. North Danville. Nunde. Ashen. Portage. Sparta. Springwater. West Sparta. York. I 1609 absent 400 adopted. Authorizing a supplemental professional services contract for the engineering, design, right-of-way construction support and construction inspection phases of a bridge, New York Culver replacement project. Levonia, Center Road, County Road 39 over Kenny Creek, town of Levonia, P I N 4 B N Y dot 34, Labella Associates.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Is there any questions or discussion on this resolution? During that, please Michelle.
Evan. Caleronia. Canisius. Geneseo. Groveland. Lester. Lima. Levonia. Mount Morris. North Danville. Nunde. Ashen. Portage. Sparta. Springwater. West Sparta. York. I 1609 absent 400 adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign a contract clarification with the Livingston County Administrator Ian McCoyle.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Is there any questions or discussion on this resolution?
Evan. Caleronia. Canisius. Geneseo. Groveland. Lester. Lima. Levonia. Mount Morris. North Danville. Nunde. Ashen. Portage. Sparta. Springwater. West Sparta. York. I 1609 absent 400 adopted. Correcting tax rule, various towns.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Is there any discussion on this resolution?
Evan. Caleronia. Canisius. Geneseo. Groveland. Lester. Lima. Levonia. Mount Morris. North Danville. Nunde. Ashen. Portage. Sparta. Springwater. West Sparta. York. I 1609 absent 400 adopted.
Still have the public hearing open. I ask the question, is there any member of the public or any supervisor who should speak on local law of the 2000 kind of group? During that, I'll close the public hearing. I'll also ask for a motion to move this to a vote.
So move.
We have a motion in the second. All of the favor. Both. Scaring, now please Michelle.
Evan. Caleronia. Canisius. Geneseo. Groveland. Lester. Lima. Levonia. Mount Morris. North Danville. Nunde. Ashen. Portage. Sparta. Springwater. West Sparta. York. I 1609 absent 400 adopted. Chairman appointments to the Genesee Finger Lakes Regional Planning Council, Michael Falk, Gregory Horr, Bonnie Taylor Davis, Angela Ellis and William Bacon. The Genesee Transportation Council, David LaFieber and Angela Ellis. The Genesee Transportation Council Planning Committee, Zachary Craftnell, Angela Ellis and Jason Wolfhanger. The Glow Solid Waste Committee, Daniel L. Pangrazio, Michael J. Fox, Donald Wester and Catherine Van Horn. Thank you.
I think she called you Michael J. Fox.
Almost, almost. I was on a rhythm.
Yeah, I just have a couple of things. So the state budget got introduced by the governor. There's actually a lot of good in there for counties. Usually it's not the case. There's a few things in there of note. One is that the Dwyer fund was pushing for for some time. There is an allocation in there for $100,000. It's a veterans program. There's an allocation of $100,000 in there for Livingston County's Dwyer program, which is great. The sales tax theft, the intercepts that they've been doing over the years, the AIM money and the distressed hospital fund, one was removed. So the AIM money was back into the state budget, so hopefully it stays there. So that's multiple hundreds of thousands of dollars of impact to Livingston County. The other one is the distressed hospital fund unfortunately is still in the budget as coming out of local sales tax dollars. Lots more in the state budget to talk about as we get to it. The sales tax, 2021, the total returns were up 15% for the county versus the prior year. So that's great news. Inflation helps. Some of that pent up demand helps. It also is compared against a year that had some significant blips downward because of COVID. So it was 21 versus 20 that our comparison is. But we're by far the highest mark we've ever been at for local sales tax collections, even with those two sales tax intercepts that the state took away from us, which totaled about $800,000. So wanted to make sure you were aware of that. There was some news on the casino Seneca Nation issue. I did ask Amy to pull up our financials on that. So I was somewhat correct in ways and means. 2018, we did not receive any casino money. We last got it in 2017. But when we got it, we got it to the tune of $354,000. So that's the money we got in 15, 16 and 17, and then it just stopped in 18 because the Seneca Nation and the state got in this big squabble and who's do what, who pays what. So it just sort of sat out there. Nobody got the payments in the exclusivity zone is what we're called. So they had this grand bargain, grand agreement. They're going to do a new compact and NISAC is telling us that it will be twofold. One, it will be sort of arrears, all these outstanding from 2018 onward payments. So 350, four times four or five years worth of payments will be made to us in one lump sum. And then moving forward, we'll start to get that 350 a year moving forward to actually budget. So that's, that's pretty great and grand. We'll see if it really materializes that way, but that's, that's a distinct possibility. And then just a couple of other things. The shared services grant announcement came through. So our, you know, we did the plan in December. We filed, that all came through. They approved some things, didn't approve others. It ended up being $412,000. So that'll come back to the county. Then we have that distribution plan. So you'll all get some of that of what's to come through. Wyoming County gets some of that too, because they have the shared dialysis partnership. But it's, the county will probably end up taking about 300 plus thousand of that in revenue back to the county. Speaking of Wyoming County on a very, very sad and tragic note, the guy that we were working very closely with at the hospital system, the present CEO, Joe McTurnan, tragically and suddenly passed away, 44 years old, four kids under six years of age. He was our lead contact with the dialysis project to make it a reality at CNA. So we just found out yesterday that he passed away. So fair or bad news there. Great guy, very good to work with, got that over the hump for us. That was his background with dialysis. So, you know, they're, they're kind of real and overwhelming county. So if you know or see any of those supervisors, we've already sent them our sympathies and our offer of assistance if they need anything. Last but not least, Bill, could you just brief the board? I know you talked to most everybody here, but those you didn't hit. We did get a new shipment of test kits, so we have those here, so.
I think I got around to most of you, but if I missed you, the 150 test kits that we have for your towns, you can pick up after the meeting downstairs at the back door. We'll have a couple of guys down there to just pull up. We'll see you, we'll bring the boxes out to you, two boxes. They're downstairs for you right after the meeting.
Any other matters to come to the board?
Mr. Chairman, if I may. In regards to Mr. Man and everyone, our administrator, Mr. Foyle, we're hoping we are coming to seeing some light at the end of the tunnel with this whole pandemic thing. Just don't want us to forget about our public, you know, folks such as the Department of Health, our, even our highway folks, everybody that's been involved in keeping us all safe. And I've used some of the services, the testing, the booster, the, you know, the shots. Just commend the smoothness and the hard work that everyone as teens have put together during these last couple of years. And we still have some bumpy roads to get over yet. And you know what I'm talking about. We don't need to go into that right now. But just want to thank each and every one that's involved. I don't want to forget anyone. All of us supervisors, we're all in this together. We've done it together as a team. Just want to take a moment and say thank you and thank everyone. So. That's my, thank you.